Welcome to the 5:30 PM September 14th City Council Special Meeting relating to Proposed Budget for Fiscal Year 2023. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
Yes, individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Sign-up cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Comments made under public comment must relate directly to the agenda. No sign-up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all agenda items. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to the city council should be placed in the box on the table in the council chamber.
Thank you very much. City Manager, would you kind of guide us through the steps?
Okay, well, I've got a presentation I'd like to do first, and then we'll get to the reading of the ordinances and public comment.
Perfect, thank you.
Here we go. This is the FY 2023 Annual Operating and Capital Budget Public Hearing. Next slide. The proposed budget, which was produced on July 29th, 2022, had a proposed millage rate of 7.2145 and a proposed debt millage rate of 0.1442. During the August 16th Budget Workshop, I recommended a reduction of the operating millage to 6.9812 mills. This is the first public hearing. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for September 22nd at 5:30 PM. The FY 2023 budget is built on an operating millage rate of 6.9812 mills, which is 10% above the previous revenues per Chapter 74, 430. During the public hearing, City Council may discuss the percentage increase in millage over the rollback rate, if any, to fund the general fund budget and for the purposes which the ad valorem tax revenues are being increased. You'll also hear comments from the public regarding the increase in the ad valorem revenues as well as the millage rate. Next slide, please. The FY 2023 budget is proposed at 6.9812 mills, which is 8-point, correction, 9.81 above the rollback rate of 6.3573 mills, generating 2.17 million in additional revenue over last year's adopted budget. The proposed budget uses these additional dollars to fund half of the FY 2022-23 City Pay Plan and a 5.4% COLA to bring our positions closer to market and attract and retain the best in work class. Additionally, we fund public safety staffing levels and equipment and increase the cost of, we're funding the increased cost of consumer consumables due to inflationary pressures. This was the strategic goals and objectives that council formulated at your 19 February 2022 first public workshop. Next slide, the budget environment that we're in. There is an increase in our property values of 15.3%. However, our operating costs and personnel costs have also increased significantly this year. At the beginning of the budget cycle, the next several slides are what staff was given to formulate the proposed budget to you. And you've seen these throughout the budget workshop. If you have any questions about these items of the budget priorities, I'll answer any questions that you have, but I'll go through these pretty quickly. The pay adjustment we've talked about, we originally had hoped to get the complete pay study implemented this year, but we were not able to do that. We'll take a look at the second half of the pay study at mid-year and/or look at completing the pay study in FY 24. Next slide. We use a five-year plan to prepare this budget, and we requested staff use an 8% increase in operating. And for a budget 24 through 26, a planning of 10% increase in operating. Not sure where that's going to land. We're paying attention to the inflationary pressures and the interest rates that we're all certainly aware of right now. We also are adjusting current staffing levels. This budget brings on three new police officers as well as six new firefighters. Next slide. Next slide. I think you're stuck. Okay, here we go. As part of the budget, we were fortunate to receive the American Rescue Act Plan funding of $8.6 million. We've expended the first round of that at 4.3 million. Council approved the expenditures of the additional 4.3 million that will be used as part of this budget in this budget year. Next slide. This is how we balanced the budget as we went from the current millage rate down to the 6.98 millage rate that we are currently proposing. We made some adjustments to our revenue and expenditures. Next slide. This is all funds revenue, and you can see how that's split up of where our revenue is generated. And this is the expenditures, and you can see public safety is a significant portion of our all-funds budget. When you compare the millage rates to other cities, this is a good one to be at the bottom of the pack. We are in fourth place, if you will, fourth lowest in the county of millage rate comparison per capita, with West Melbourne being the lowest and Cocoa Beach being the highest. This is the same information graphically depicted in comparison per capita of ad valorem revenues and taxes. We actually adjusted the tax house this year. We adjusted the assessed value up to $229,000. And the tax house that we're displaying here is a home-setted property and applies a millage rate of 7.2354, which is the operating millage of 6.9812 and the debt service at millage at .2542. You can see 33% of the taxes are, go to of our public schools. 38% go to the city of Titusville, 19% go to the county. And we have the two MSTUs as well as the North, correction, the St. John's Water Management District taxing. The city attorney will read the first ordinance, the ordinance's first readings for the record.
Ordinance number 31, 2022, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, providing for the millage for the operation of the city of Titusville and voted debt service levy for fiscal year 2023 and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 32, 2022, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, adopting the general and related budget to the city of Titusville for the fiscal year 2023 and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 33, 2022, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending Section 21-241.3 of the Code of Ordinances by amending and increasing the schedule of rates and charges for water and sewer service, providing for findings incorporation into the code, severability, and an effective date. Ordinance number 34, 2022, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending Section 16-116 of the Code of Ordinances by amending and establishing an increase to the residential monthly charge for solid waste, recycling, and additional cart fees, and by amending Section 16-117 of the Code of Ordinances by amending and establishing an increase to the commercial dumpster and commercial can monthly charges for solid waste and recycling fees and increasing the commercial dumpster rental fees. And by amending Section 16-118 of the Code of Ordinances by amending and establishing an increase in the extra charges for special services. And by amending Section 16-119 of the Code of Ordinances by clarifying, amending, and establishing the amounts for container deposits, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date, and incorporation into the code. Ordinance number 35, 2022, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, adopting the Enterprise Fund and Capital Improvement Program budgets of the city of Titusville for the fiscal year 2023 and providing for an effective date.
Next slide. According to Florida Statute 200.065, the following is to be read publicly. The city of Titusville, Florida is the taxing authority. 6.3573 is the rolled-back millage rate. The operating millage rate to be levied is proposed at 6.9812 mills. The percent of increase over the rollback millage rate is 9.81%, which is characterized as a tax increase. The voted debt millage rate is to be levied at .24, correction, .2542 mills. Next slide. Council recommended action from staff in order is to tentatively adopt the millage rate proposed at 6.9812, tentatively adopt the voted debt service millage rate of .2542, and tentatively adopt the general fund and related budgets, and tentatively adopt the enterprise and capital improvement program budgets. Completes my presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions the council may have regarding the FY 2023 proposed budget.
Member Nelson.
In terms of our house and our taxes between last year and this year, if we equalize things so that the house was the same amount as the house we had last year, would this increase or decrease taxes? I know that's convoluted.
If I need to, if I understand your question, you're saying because we raise the value of the house, will that raise the value of their taxes? Yes, it will raise the value of their taxes.
If we lowered that value to the value of the house we used last year, would the taxes in effect be raised or lower?
It would still be a tax, considered a tax increase based on the trim information and the millage rate, because we're not using the rolled-back rate.
Okay. Do we know approximately how much?
I don't know that number right now, but I can get it for you. I don't have it on the top of my head right now.
I'd be interested in.
I can get that for you.
Thank you.
Member Stokel.
Okay, just clarifying questions. So if we lowered it to the 6.3573, which would be the rollback rate, that would make, that would ensure that we're bringing in the same amount of money that we did last year.
That's correct. It's not an exact number, but yes, per the Department of Revenue, it'd be considered no tax increase.
Gotcha, which is what I would hope to do. However, with inflation, yeah, I hate raising taxes, but I also understand inflation. And I wondered if somebody from staff could speak to the inflation and the rising prices that we have seen in gas, for instance, and just purchasing trucks, anything like that, that would help to clarify.
I'll just put Kevin Cook on the spot for our fleet as one example of fuel and equipment costs and repair costs.
Thanks, Kevin.
Yeah, so yeah, we experienced at the peak of inflation, we were about two and a half times our monthly expenses on fuel. We weren't using more fuel, but we were costing a lot more to pump. We've gotten a little relief from that the last month or so, but not much, because diesel hasn't dropped as much as gasoline. So while Police Fleet has seen some savings, solid waste, fire hasn't, because we run mainly diesel. So that's on the just sheer gas. We've seen about doubling pricing on parts in the fleet. So all the operating divisions run repairs on vehicles. And then every vehicle is seeing rather in large increases, 50% or more on the lighter trucks and a lot more on the larger vehicles. So you see that reflected in our budget as well, that as we participate buying what was an F-150, it's 28,000, that becomes 40,000. Or fire truck may go from 1.3 to 1.6 million in just the cycle of the inflation. So, and that's all, we're hoping that's what it is. We've seen in construction too. All of our construction deliverables base delayed on time and costing more to get services rendered. We awarded our landscaping contract, as you saw, it nearly doubled in a three-year cycle. So, so we're seeing that from any pass-through of service charge or material supplies.
Another struggle that we're having is, we discussed today, as part of this budget, we're buying a new ladder truck. The delivery date from the time we purchased the vehicle till the time we're estimated to get it is two years.
So if we wanted to lower it back with no tax increase, we would, I think it would be safe to say we probably could not have the same services because of the cost while we still have our population increasing.
That's correct.
The other question I had is in regards to recruitment process and turnover and being able to hire. And I think this speaks to kind of why we did the pay study. I don't know if any department wants to talk about the turnover rate they've seen or how it might have been a struggle to get people hired and staying.
I'll have Chief Lau.
Thank you.
We are definitely seeing it recruiting, we're still able to recruit, and our recruiting team is doing a phenomenal job. However, it's definitely more challenging. It's the expense of that. We are now sponsoring people through the entire academy, paying for them to attend. Years ago, when I went through, I had to incur all the costs myself, put myself through, and then apply after I'm certified. It doesn't work like that anymore. Departments, in order to get quality candidates, we have to go out, recruit them, and then pay for them. So that has upped our training budget to the tune of about $50,000 to $60,000 a year just for folks to get them trained that they might not even work out. So you have to invest first. As far as the retention, retention in law enforcement throughout the nation is definitely the challenge, and we are continually trying new techniques to encourage them to stay. But most of what we're seeing is people getting out of law enforcement.
One of the encouraging things about retention in the police department is that we do have an additional Dunkin' Donuts on Garden Street that's really helped to keep them going from Titusville over to Orlando.
Thriving, thriving. Thank you.
I just want you to know, that's the second time you tossed that one out today. Member Robinson.
Yes, I understand that prices have gone up and I understand that prices of material, a lot of delays that are ahead. Now, explain to me, I know that the percentage of insurance costs, let's talk about staff, insuring the staff. I know that that is one cost that is hard to bring down once it's, once it's up, you know, material costs and so forth may come down, but insurance costs, it has a tendency to stay up when it goes up. Okay, and how is, how are we handling that in preparation as we go forward?
You're correct, Member Robinson. We just renewed our all-lines of property insurance at a 10.88% increase. And part of that was because the value of our assets have increased, so in order to keep the same level of coverage, the premiums had increased. So that and also our healthcare premiums that we have to pay to keep our employees with healthcare coverage has also increased significantly. So we're just trying to keep pace with the increases in those insurance lines.
We also don't want to sacrifice the quality care that we do provide to our employees, their families, and retirees.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else at this time?
I might. One more question.
Yeah.
Scott, I know you talked to me at one point about the increase in fuel costs being about 1.6 million. Was that about correct? Am I remembering that right?
Yeah, it's probably close to that, yes. I think the overall fleet is probably up that. Most of that's fuel.
Okay.
Member Robinson.
Yeah, this one is on fuel costs. We know that the fuel went up quite a bit from, we will say, from fiscal year using July 1st of 2021 to June 30th, and then it took a downfall. I know that we were probably, the numbers show that we were quite a bit over the amount of money that had been allocated for fuel. And I, did we recoup some of that with the lowering of fuel? I know diesel did not, I don't know how many of our vehicles use diesel versus regular gasoline. And did we recoup any of that significantly, recoup? And have we planned, what is the percentage of planning if gas prices go back up, which I kind of feel that they will go? Well, I don't, I don't think that that's going to happen. That's a wonderful dream. And, but if they go back up, where do we stand with the new budget and being able to match them possibly going back up to, for regular gasoline, that $5 mark? We just use that as a number in the new budget.
Well, I can tell you that pretty much every fuel budget was broken about two months ago.
Yes.
So the saving grace was delay on part delivery meant that a lot of the part expenses haven't also been registered. So the operating departments have had to manage the bottom line with the fact the fleet is a drain on the resource. As far as planning for the next, I can use solid waste as an example. That budget expanded for fleet alone by about nearly 20% to cover not only increased parts, but the fuel actual expenditures for the year. So we take a look at the history and what we're running in the current year and try to project what the additional increase or lowering happens and try to trend into it. But like this year, it's, it's not perfect. We, three months that were not expected to be as bad as they were, happened. We still are experiencing a diesel, it's not recovered nearly to where it was before. So while we do have a large fleet of unleaded vehicles, the diesel vehicles, as our slot waste fleet, burn through gas at a much higher rate than gasoline vehicles at a higher rate. So I think this month, we were down about 20,000 from last month on our actual fuel expenditures between internal and external fueling. But, so we hope that the budget is established well enough to cover. If it doesn't, the departments, myself, water, fire, police, who run fleets out, and we have to absorb it in our operating divisions.
When you said that you use current, if you use history, you go back and look and see what has happened over a period of time?
Yeah, shorter period now, because this has been an outrageously high jump. But we didn't want to incorporate the highest level of the peak, because then we over-budget the fuel too far. So we try to find a happy medium that we are increasing the fuel budgets, part budgets to accommodate, but not overextending department budgets to, to, to the point that impact their bottom lines.
Member Stokel.
Okay, last one. Can somebody explain and clarify this better than I can? So we are lowering our millage rate, lowering it, which is a good thing. But because of property values being increased, overall, it is a tax increase. But some homeowners will see an actual tax decrease. Can somebody just explain how that will work for some individuals?
You're talking about homestead exempt, Peter Holmes?
Yes.
Yeah, you got it, good.
Whoever wants to do that.
I'm not 100% sure I understand your question. There, some will actually see a decrease because of the cap that the county has of the 3%. So depending on what the value is of their house that it increases, it just will depend. Not everybody will see an increase. I would venture to say that probably more will see that cap, that cap, because of what we have in the county. So based on what the properties are in the city of Titusville, that's how we're able to come up with our values. I hope that, I hope that answered your question.
Yes, it does. I just wanted that stated.
Okay.
Thank you.
To play off of that, again, what Member Stokel said, we lowered the millage rate, right? But, and I'm kind of being redundant here, I think, but to understand, even though we lowered the millage rate because the values of the property went so high, that doesn't necessarily mean there'll be a tax cut. But it doesn't necessarily mean there's a tax increase? Is that what I just heard you say?
This is a tax increase. Per Florida statutes, this is considered a tax increase. But not everybody may see an increase in their own personal property tax bill because of the way the county does their 3% cap.
Okay, and from our side, as I look at it in a more basic manner, you know, parts for repairs are up, insurance is up, equipment's up, gas and diesel is up, fire trucks are way up, training is up, everything from paper to electricity is up. And I was really pleased when we were able to lower the millage rate. But that doesn't necessarily mean we can keep that from not affecting some homeowners. Can you give me a real basic of, I was going to say a $200,000 home, I'm not sure they're out there anymore. But let's say a $300,000 home, what's that do to somebody like that with the basic numbers? What's that do to their, their taxes?
We, we did describe in the tax house.
Right, right.
And that's a 250, I, I.
All right, 250 sounds good. I guess I'm just kind of wanting that verbalized away from all the houses and away from the school board and everything else. What's that do as far as, say, I, my house, I own a house, and it's worth. What's that do as far as, say, my house, I own a house, and it's worth, what'd you say, two fifty? What my taxes will go?
So if your house, we use two twenty-nine, so if your house is exempt, homestead exempt, the property tax to the city of Titusville is twelve hundred dollars.
Okay. All right. Like I said, I was kind of pleased that we were able to lower the millage with all the increases in inflation. I was actually a little surprised we were able to do that. And I'm not sure that that's going to ultimately equate to. Anybody else? Okay, so the next step would be to call cards on, and this is only on the first one. We do one by.
Mayor, what I suggest is that you open the public hearing first on ordinance number thirty-one, which is your millage, and ordinance number thirty-two, which is the general and related budgets. And we'll handle those in one public hearing. And then we will vote on your tentative millage and tentative budget. Then we'll also then open public hearings on thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five. So even on your agenda, when it has everything under number one, we will take cards on each item and open and close each ordinance as a public hearing. But I suggest thirty-one and thirty-two, because they are related as millage and budget, be opened together.
Okay, and that's kind of what I need you to guide me through. So we will go ahead and do number thirty-one and number thirty-two, but we'll do number thirty-one, call the cards.
Right, we're going to open up thirty-one and thirty-two public hearing and try and call the cards on those ordinances and handle those at one time.
But when someone comes up, they'll talk about thirty-one and then thirty-two separately?
I would suggest that, right, I would suggest that they speak about the millage and the budget in the same public hearings, because they're going to be handled together.
What I'm getting at is if somebody comes up, are they going to have their three minutes for thirty-one and then come back up for thirty-two?
I would give them the three minutes on thirty-one and thirty-two. If they need additional time, I would give them additional time, up to six minutes.
All right. Let's call cards, see how this works. And I should just go ahead and clarify, this is on thirty-one and thirty-two, ordinance number thirty-one and thirty-two.
Yes, sir, Mayor, to clarify, if they're going to speak on both at one time, then I would give them six minutes to handle both ordinances, yes, sir.
So do you want me to set the clock for three minutes or six minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess I'm going to ask the attorney, because that's been.
If they have a card on both, then we don't have a lot of people here, I would give them six.
Go ahead, start there and see where it goes.
I need thirteen.
So granted.
Thank you.
All right, here we go. Let's see how this works.
For the record, my name is Dwight Severs, resident of Titusville. I first want to thank Mr. Robati, Mr. Post, and Mr. Stolfer for providing some of the information I have commenting upon in this proceeding. One of the questions you asked, and I know I shouldn't divert, but I would say ninety percent of the houses in Titusville went up in value. It is unrealistic to suggest otherwise. I'm appearing before you because I got my notice that I was going to have a thirteen point four eight percent increase in taxes on two houses. One is my parents' house and one is my house. And I understand now it's about ten percent to the recommendation. During my term for forty years as city attorney, I never remember a city council actually increasing ad valorem taxes to approximately ten percent of the rollback rate. And certainly, we went through some difficult times back then. The lifeblood of your community in large parts are retirees, and many businesses are dependent upon them for their lifeblood as well. Increasing ad valorem taxes by ten percent approximately, water and sewer by three percent, waste recycling, stormwater by eight point three percent will greatly impact the retirement community. We have been told in the past by you and staff that the increase in housing development would pay for itself. That does not appear to be true, and existing residents and homeowners were being required to subsidize new growth and development. One of the primary sources of my income is a city pension. I don't get a cost of living increase in my city pension. And with the cost increase in homeowners' insurance and taxes and other basic services, many retirees will have difficulty making it. I would respectfully suggest before increasing taxes that you look at the other general fund revenues on pages fifty-seven through sixty of your budget. Are you increasing those fees in a comparable amount? For example, building permit fees, site plan fees, license fees? The slide presented at your budget workshop showed a budget of one million seven hundred fifty-seven thousand for the cost of building inspection division. Six hundred and twenty-two thousand came from the permits and fees. The general fund subsidized the rest of one million one hundred and thirty-four thousand. Why? No increase in those fees, but you're more than willing to increase our ad valorem taxes by ten percent. In addition, obviously, you need to look at pages sixty-one through sixty-three of your budget. The largest cost on those pages is personnel costs. Can they be reduced in any way? Professional services, an increase from twenty twenty, from two hundred and forty-seven thousand to one million two hundred thousand. Obviously, there's an increase in travel reimbursement, there's a twenty-eight percent increase in miscellaneous charges rather as such. In addition, there's a twenty point six six increase in the North Bovard Economic Development Zone to eight hundred and twenty-two thousand that you're taking out of the general fund ad valorem taxes and placing with the zone. That's entirely discretionary, and you don't have to do it. I'd rather see the money spent on police officers and firefighters and other essential personnel. And I'll get into greater detail about that. Because of the history of the zone and the totally discretionary nature, I suggest you look at those expenses. In two thousand eleven and two thousand twelve, I became familiar with the zone and the zone concept at the request of Commissioner Robin Fisher. Based upon my review, and Mr. Fisher personally encouraged me, I encouraged the mayor at that time and put my neck on the line, so to speak, to support the zone and the bonanza that was coming from ad valorem taxes from the FPNL plant. I am fully aware likewise, no other city in the county has this eight hundred and twenty-two thousand taken out of ad valorem taxes and put over into a zone. They do not. After my review of the zones from January one, twenty twenty-one, I have some comments concerning some of those expenditures. I'm going to skip to page six of my comments because of time. The first is granting two point five million dollars ad valorem tax money to install a sewer line enlistation on public property. The city manager made his report, and Trim Corps was going to be the developer or contractor at a projected cost of two point five million dollars. In addition, there was only one point five million dollars available, and you're in essence pledging or saying, we'll impose this zone dollar, the tip funds, for the next three years. Before discussing the merits, I'd like to simply point out, in my forty years of experience, never have ad valorem taxes been used to take care of utility expenses. This is unheard of, because there are different taxpayers or different payers, and they've always kept them different. I have a lot more to say.
Counsel?
How much more time do you need?
Pardon?
How much more time do you need? How much time would you like?
I'll wrap that up for now in three minutes, okay?
Go, let's go.
As I said, traditionally, what occurred was if somebody wanted service, then saw the line and negotiated a payback agreement for those connecting along the line. That's been the traditional method forever. In addition, the alternative, you could impose tap-on fees or user fees and assess the benefit of property owners. Even the board members questioned, since the value of the property is increased by this addition to the sewer line, shouldn't the property owners along this area be asked to reimburse a portion of the cost? Says their property values are going up. That's not what occurred. Now, turning to the fund itself, in my opinion, looking at the criteria, Trim Corps is not doesn't own any land there, they're not developing anything, they're simply a construction contractor. You have a lot of other utility construction contractors can do the job. This totally is financed by your money. There's no competitive bidding, competitive solicitation for a contractor to do this job. In addition, the engineer, interestingly enough, he's the same engineer that's doing the apartment complex, he's the engineer on this job. It's not solicited pursuant to Florida Statute two eighty-seven oh five five, which is required by law. It's simple as that. I think there's serious questions as to the validity of this contract. In addition, I would respectfully suggest where there's two hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars budgeted for planning, development, and engineering costs, why didn't the city of Titusville require competitive solicitation for engineering costs? Why didn't you do that? Why didn't you competitively solicit, since all the money is coming from you? It does not make sense. I don't think it fundamentally met the criteria of the code or ordinances. In addition, I respectfully suggest that, in addition to some of the other items, it appears to me some of the people using, who have special knowledge with regard and a relationship with individuals' secure grants and are making money off of your grants by and selling the property and flipping it and making money. And you've had board members express their opinion as to how they oppose that. Finally, at this stage, I'd simply like to turn to page ten and say, I would respectfully suggest that you should direct the city manager to come back with a budget option to roll back to five percent and no more than five percent, and further direct the city manager and city attorney to review the tip funds and update it this time, it's been ten years. And I'd much rather see your ad valorem taxes of eight hundred and twenty-two thousand go to support police officers, firefighters, pay raises, rather than giving to some people who make money off of your gift of an incentive, and they're making money off of it. Just review it.
Thank you. Well presented, thank you. Although, there's a lot. A lot. Next card, please.
We have Trenton Mansfield, and he just signed up with one for one ordinance, so I'll do three minutes.
Which one is it?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one. Hello, sir.
Hello. My name is Trenton Mansfield, fifteen eighty-five Pentax Avenue. Just a couple of questions, there's a lot of construction in the city that's going to be coming online in the next year. The condos on the riverfront, I'm assuming they're going to be done, I mean, they've been going on for a long time. Those taxes from those condos, have they been paying taxes? I'm assuming not because of construction, but have they been paying taxes thus far? And if not, when they come online this year, I'm assuming they're going to be coming online this year, are those taxes from those built into the budget that's being presented tonight?
Do I have staff can respond to that, because that's certainly beyond me?
There's a time lag from construction and when it comes on the tax rolls, and that's determined by the property appraisers. We get the raw data telling us how much new construction is added to the rolls, so we don't have a breakout of that per individual.
We don't know how long that lag will be?
Excuse me?
We don't know how long that lag will be?
It's about a year, I believe.
Okay. Go ahead, sir, thank you.
Okay, so we won't get any tax revenue for a year, is what you're telling me? Because there's a lot of new construction in the city of Titusville that has come online. And I brought this up last year also, I brought up the new construction that's going to be coming online, and that's going to be more money into the tax rolls. And I'm just, ten percent's a lot. I mean, we keep talking about rollback rates, and while we're lowering the millage rate, well, my house went up this much, you know, we're playing semantics here. So at the end of the day, we're raising taxes, that's what we're doing. We're raising taxes on the residents of the city. So that's what I want to know, are they, when they come online, when do we start getting taxes as a city? And also, I would like to, for the rest of my time, have we asked, I mean, I understand that inflation's going on, but have we asked the all departments in the city to check their budgets? I mean, I've had to check my budget because of inflation, and have we asked each department to check their budgets also?
Absolutely. From the beginning, we set at eight percent, and I believe the inflationary numbers were at nine at the time, and we've taken an additional three percent off of that as a result.
But we haven't come to a real conclusion on the new construction that's coming online?
It's about a year lag, so we don't estimate that. Yeah.
Similar, and just say, because it's so similar, similar questions that I have asked through this process, one of them was, what about all this new building? And I didn't realize there was a lag, and it sounds like it's about a year, but it doesn't sound like we get to say exactly when that lag comes to an end. Who says that for us, property appraiser?
Property appraiser, based on certificate of occupancy when it comes online.
But they still pay taxes from that point forward. I mean, they don't.
They pay undeveloped, which is a much lower fee.
But they don't, let's say they move into it April first, they don't live there for free, tax-free from April first to the next year.
The property appraiser has a line on the tax form that they send to us that has new construction, value adjustment that's added, any annexed property, and so that's all included in their dollar amount, and we can't tax it until they say we can tax it.
But they're still paying taxes. I've been to the closing table, I'm thirty-seven, I've been to the closing table fourteen times in my lifetime, and every time I go to the closing table, like, say, I'm adjusted for, say, April first, but I don't close till April fifteenth, then they have to adjust my taxes. So there's no way, I believe, that somebody's going to live in a house for a year or so and not have to pay taxes, it just doesn't happen. So my question is, is the taxes, when do they come in? And are they on this? And if they're not, shouldn't we account for it? I mean, shouldn't we? I mean, it could be, it could be a couple million dollars, and we don't even know.
Reasonable and similar questions, because I'm just not that experienced on this deal here as far as when this happens. But I got the same answer as far as it's a lag period and the property appraiser determines when that happens. I'd go back to your, but don't they have to pay the taxes when they move in? So I certainly think that's.
They pay at the closing table.
Say again?
They pay at the closing table, and it's built into their mortgage.
Yeah.
Anybody that's been to a closing knows, I mean, it's there, it's on the line, I don't.
Certainly, certainly, as you saw, we ask, we'll continue, because like I said before, you even came with that one, that was were two of my main questions.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for him.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Miss Stokel? Member Stokel?
Trent, do you know if on your individual house, even though, yes, we are technically raising taxes, do you know if with your homestead exemption, if you're going to personally see a tax increase?
Yes, I am going to see, I looked at it very shortly.
Even though, I know.
It's about fifty dollars or somewhere around there. I mean, and I'll say this, like, I know my time's up, but I'll say this, it doesn't affect me, it doesn't, I can afford it, you know what I'm saying? But it affects the renter.
That's what.
The renting, the rent increase has gone up so much in this state, and they're not homesteaded.
Terrible.
And they're limited, I think, at eight percent. Y'all could, the property appraiser can raise theirs eight percent. So the renter, now, instead of it, my house, I can rent it out for two thousand dollars a month. Now, if my taxes go up an extra two hundred dollars a year, who's going to eat that?
And then, I had another question for staff. I think, and I don't know if we know this or not, what Trenton was getting at, when they, when we get our forecasting from the property appraiser, do they take into account any potential new construction, or is that just not taken into consideration for the forecasting purposes? They can't do that?
I don't think they do it that way. We do get an estimated tax roll in advance of the final one. We do get an estimated tax roll in advance of the final one. I'm not exactly sure what all they calculate into it, because they can only go by whenever they get their certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
And at that point, the tax then will, will officially be on our roll.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, um, next card.
Um, Stan Johnston, and he's, um, speaking on 31 and 32.
Just recently, I, I don't know, the, the, uh, I was trying to get my, um, my, my posters in, in alignment, and then the policeman just approached me angrily and said, "Stop moving, stop moving them, moving my posters." So anyhow, I'm looking for my poster, and I'm going to go look again, I use my time up for that. But I tell you what, I resent this. I resent the police coming up to me in a public meeting when you're in charge and angrily approaching me and saying, "Hey, Stan Johnson, you're disturbing everybody. Nobody's behind me. I'm moving my, moving some signs around, getting them ready, and I'm not ready." So, I don't like what had just happened, and I think that you should be handling it and not this police officer coming to me angrily and saying, "You're doing something wrong."
You're ready.
Because here's what happened. At the first, this meeting, said, "We don't want you walking around here," so forth like that. I didn't do that.
I got you.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead and hold the clock.
Anyhow, I thought I had a poster with me, and I don't see it. Here it is. Listen up.
All right, start the clock.
First, first of all, I thank, thank Mr. Severs for, for his presentation, because it is certainly concerning to me is that, is that the legality of what the city is doing. In other words, for example, if you're going to have a bunch of sewer improvements and so forth in this particular budget, it sounds like to me, he's saying, "Hey, there's a legality question here." I mean, this is an enterprise fund and so forth, and we're putting it on, what do you say, something like, uh, ad valorem. And, uh, that's of a concern, because what, what I'm concerned with is, first of all, on these two items, 31 and 32, is that we've got a lot of problems, problems that the city is not addressing. And, and, and it has to do with, number of has to do is, for example, is, is the OPEB, uh, we had, we had about 2018, is there was a 27-minute discussion on bankruptcy. So, that's, that's a concern. I mean, I don't whether, how you're, you're handling OPEB now, but, uh, we keep promising we're going to get money and money and money, and, and, and I don't think we did it la, last year. We didn't do it what we, we thought we are, we, we projected we're going to do. And, and I think it's wonderful that the city of Titusville is right near the Cape, because we've got money coming in that this city is, is more prosperous than many cities in the, in the United States. We're, we're in a lucky position, and I'm sorry about the, uh, increases in, in the fuel and diesel and so forth like that. Uh, everybody's doing, everybody's having that same problem. So, uh, it, it's a tough time, but I, it, it appears that, you know, we're in, we're in really, uh, sweet, a sweet position. So, um, I, I'm, 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 I like that, uh, and I'm, I'm sympathetic that, that, with the inflation, but I'm also understanding that we're in a boom period for, for the city of Titusville. So, um, I would like some of our money to be spent and budgeted for the problems that, that, that I have, I have approached the city of Titusville with. And, and, and those 31 and 32, I'm not sure exactly what they are, but in land development is that, uh, uh, the city is, is, is violation, violating many laws. And, uh, it seems like it's, it's, we need some common sense. We need some common sense. For example, last, like, last, yesterday, I talked to you about a survey. The survey is blatantly, blatantly illegal, inaccurate, and it's fake. And the city of Titusville has all the information that shows all these three things. They can't draw it, they can't stake it out, and yet, it's approved. The city's approved it. Same project is, same project has been approved with a 12-foot-wide driveway to be put inside a 10-foot easement. I want you to understand, that's impossible. It's impossible. City does nothing to correct it. So, financially, it seems like whether we need more people answering their phones or, or looking at what's going on, something is wrong, or we need somebody who knows what they're doing. So, I would like you to consider that in your budgeting. Uh, and, and that's important. Uh, I, I, I brought this other one. You don't like to see some of these, like, for example, this, this particular poster right here. I know that, uh, Dr. Stokel does not see this. No, not at all. Not at all. I mean, she's going to turn her head the other way, probably. And same with, with Jolene Nelson, because they're, they're partnering, they partner with this, uh, particular fraud. It's, it's a big deal. And, and, uh, and I, I just sent you an email today, is that, is that I'm hoping to, um, recommend my attorney to subpoena our city manager. And this will be part of it. This will be part of it. And then, when he's, when he's subpoenaed, I hope it's going to happen. So, so, uh, I want you to budget your money, thinking about, budget our money, thinking about these things that I've brought to your attention. What have I got, 38 seconds left?
Uh, about 35.
Okay, 35 seconds. So, uh, please, please consider these items, and, uh, thank you for your consideration, uh, Mayor Diesel.
Thank you.
In, in other words, because I've had people come to me and say, "They're not going to sit with me because of some police harassment that I have had." However, let me say this, Mr. Mr. Lao has done a fantastic job, and the police department is great. I've just had a few little run-ins, and I think mainly because of Mr. Larisse. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card. Um, city attorney, and, and certainly, I, I don't know that this is even the place for that, we're talking budget and all that, but clearly, um, there were some things thrown up there that were, were, it, it on face value, some concern about, not sure it's legal, this or that. Can you, uh, you know, anything you heard that you can simply say, you know, we're, we're fine? Just, because clearly, that's, uh, that legality stuff is over my head.
Sure. I haven't had an opportunity to review the papers that were left. Um, it appears from the conversation that it's the procedures of the zone. I mean, when it came to our TIP dollars, those go to the zone, but it's up to us to then decide how those city zone dollars will be spent. And as I read and as I heard, the question is whether or not the project, the zone utilizes money for economic development, what are the processes and procedures they followed, use of that money, would inappropriate? I could certainly look at that. Um, I'm not part of the zone, I don't represent the zone, but we can certainly look at that.
Member Stokel.
Yeah, that was one of the questions I had, um, just in terms of the zone, how that works, like, what was mentioned was the competitive bid process. I don't know if they follow the same rules we do as a city, um, regarding that, and I would be interested in knowing that process.
Sure, the county represents that board, I can certainly talk to them.
Okay, that, and then also the aspect of being able to use those funds for utilities specifically. Um, the other question I had was in regards to the fees that were mentioned, has that been something that we've looked at regarding the budget to? I know we've discussed it at council before, like permit fees, impact fees.
We've adjusted them.
Okay.
Good. Member Robinson.
Yes, um, I am, uh, answer, as you know, I've lived my life and learned, uh, and that's where there is smoke, there is some fire always around, or something about it beginning to burn. And, uh, like, I, I would like to know more, uh, about this, that is, uh, an issue that has been, uh, mentioned, uh, in my walking around and running and jogging, uh, and, uh, and never laid out to this point. Uh, again, we are required to watch the taxpayers' money, and, um, I would like if, if it's, uh, if it's no fire, uh, I would like to put it to bed. And if there's fire, just find out what we need to do and how we can do to make it go away. That's my thoughts on, on this. And the city, uh, the city attorney said he would look into it and find out and try to give us some, uh, uh, fire, uh, prevention, uh, anecdotes.
Regardless of moving forward, this is a first vote, correct? Meaning that this is, this is not the last time that we'll discuss this?
Tonight, you will adopt a tentative millage and tentative budgets. And then, at your next hearing, you'll adopt a final millage and a final budget.
Okay, member Nelson.
So, basically, whatever we do this, this meeting, we get additional answers, we can reduce it next meeting?
You, you cannot raise the millage at the next meeting from what you do tonight, but you could reduce it.
The only thing you can do is reduce it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. Um, anybody else? Uh, member Robinson? I'm sorry, go ahead.
If, uh, if all is well, I, I, if, if this is time for a motion to accept, uh, the, the ordinances that has been placed before, ordinance, uh, I think it's 31 and 32?
First thing you would need to do is adopt a tentative millage.
Okay. Um, I make the motion of, uh, adopting the tentative, uh, millage rate as proposed.
6.9812. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Which would, yeah, I'll make sure was, which would be 9.81% above the rollback rate of 6.3573, and you'd also need to tentatively adopt the voted debt service millage, or vote, or adopt the tentative voted debt service millage at .2542. Is that correct?
Yes.
Same time?
That would be, yes, that would be your millage motion.
Right. With, instead, I, I want to make that motion with those numbers as been stated, put in place, or, unless, I don't want to write them down, I just want to just state the notice that, the numbers that has been mentioned by the attorney, uh, to, for us to adopt.
So, is your motion?
The one that was showed on the, on our, uh, presentation.
Is your motion to adopt a tentative millage rate of 6.9812 mils, which is 9.81% above the rollback rate of 6.3573 mils, and to adopt a tentative voted debt service millage at .2542 mils?
Yes.
All right, then I have the motion from member Robinson.
I would second, um, but I did want to make sure that at the next meeting, Mr. Severs indicated there was a 28% increase in miscellaneous charges, and I also wanted to get some explanation on that.
And there, there's a lot there that was submitted, um, and certainly some clarifications between now and then can be done. Uh, at this point, it looks like we are, are doing our tentative, and we need to get that done. So, uh.
And Mayor, I'd like to say that the percentage by which the millage rate does exceed the rollback rate is a percentage increase in property taxes that would be tentatively adopted by the city council.
Okay, and that was part of that motion?
Right, stating that the percentage by which your millage rate exceeds your rollback rate, that is a percentage increase in property taxes tentatively adopted.
Yes, it is an increase in the property taxes. Yes.
Okay, so, member Nelson.
It's the second.
All right, I have, uh, member Robinson with the motion, member Nelson with the second. Uh, roll call vote.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan's absent. Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion passes. Um, city attorney? Excuse me, city manager. Either one of y'all, take off.
Say that again, I'm sorry. Next, you would need to have a motion adopting the tentative general-related budget to the city for fiscal year 2023.
Correct, and that's ordinance, that's 32.
Yes. I, um, I make the motion of adopting the tentative general budget related, uh, general and related budget of the city of Titusville for the fiscal year 22 and 23.
Okay, and is that, um, as set forth in ordinance 32, 2022?
As set forth in ordinance 32, 2022.
As presented, as presented tonight?
That's correct. All right, as presented.
All right, I have the motion by member Robinson, the second by member Nelson. Roll call vote.
Uh, member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Passes. Next up.
Next, we'll open a public hearing on ordinance number 33, 2022.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, there's no vote on this?
This is just first, right, it's just first reading, but we do take cards.
I'm not saying we won't take cards, but just to get ahead of myself here, there's no vote on this one, there's no vote on the next one.
That's correct.
Okay, cards, and this is separately, number 33, 2022, call the cards.
Tony Shifflow?
Tony Shifflow, 715 Tropic Street. I've come to speak for the peasants. I said, "I've come to speak for the little people. I've come to speak for the people like myself who are living on social security." You know, there wasn't much of a future, um, future IRA plan, I, plan for jugglers and itinerant street musicians, so probably I did it to myself. However, um, CNN came to the rescue, and I did manage to make enough to get social security. But I can't go to the government and ask them to raise my social security rates, and you guys, you know, you're looking at raising the water rates, and the people in this town don't like the water. They're not going to like having the water rates increased. There's a lot of talk on social media. I'm not a real social media person, but I check in, and there's a lot of talk about the water, a lot of dissatisfaction. So, I would guess the 3% increase in the water rate, if I knew as a citizen that it was going to make the water taste better, be better, not have those PFABs and things in it that we've been hearing about at other meetings, then I probably wouldn't mind paying 3% more. The water here is really already outrageous. I pay more for water in Titusville than I've ever paid for water in Atlanta, or Decatur, Georgia, or Orlando, Florida, or St. Petersburg, and those are all the places I've ever really lived. But, um, the water bills here are high already, and I just think, you know, 3% isn't much now, and then on the solid waste, that's going up, and I know, I kind of get Brevard County and, and city things mixed up, especially on solid waste and recycling, and who's collecting and who's being paid. But I know that, I figured it up, um, when Brevard County announced they were going to increase by a certain percentage this year, and next year, an increase on top of that, and the third year on top of that, and when I figured them up, it came to like 39%, if you just added, you know, the 8% this year and the 7% next year. It, it's a burden on the people, and I know the city that raising taxes is the way that you get your revenue. But where do people like me, the peasants and the little people, where do we get the extra revenue? I guess I could hit the streets as a juggler again. Let's work on a busking ordinance, okay? And I would do that. I've done it before. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shifflow.
Um, I just want to make a, I.
Ms. Stokel. Member Stokel.
Do we know, is social security getting a cost of living increase?
I believe it's 6.6%.
Okay.
Uh, next card, please.
Um, Stan Johnston.
Uh, Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. We're on number 33, and this has to do with the, uh, water and sewer, and, uh, I've, I've addressed the city numerous times on, on some issues, and last night I even talked to you about one thing, and that was, uh, I think it should be, is that apparently, council's not listening to, to what, uh, Mr. Stauffer has said about the boiled water alerts, the second presentation that he did, and correcting his first presentation. And he said he was going to go look at it and see how much it's going to do to, to redo our treatments. and see how much it's going to do to, to redo our treatments process system, so that we wouldn't have these, and it's talking, we're talking about citywide boiled water alert, understand this, that when we get this boiled water alert, it's too late, because the, in other words, it's been, the pollution was, uh, coliform was tested in the raw water days before that, and, and, and in other words, the test results came back later after he had, for the coliform test. So in other words, you, uh, so, so what I had, is I had a conversation yesterday with, uh, Chad something, and, uh, and he's operations for Water Resources, and he's been here nine years, and I said, well, you know about this, this, uh, forelog virus, uh, that were required meet, and he said, yes, and I said, as far as I know, I don't know of any other city in the state of Florida that has this requirement. Like, we're talking to citywide boiled water alerts because of it, he said, yes, there is, and I said, name me one. He couldn't name it. So, that, so, so what we're looking at is something that, that, uh, Mr. Stauffer said was going to cost millions of dollars or something like that, and, uh, at least a million dollars, and I'm hoping that this is in the budget, and I, I want it to be in the budget. So, so this has to do with number thirty-three. So, uh, uh, I'm asking you to please consider that, the boiled, boiled water alert, and we also had this issue about the hundred and seventy-six parts per trillion, and PFAS. Good night, good night, Joe, and, um, we just, good night. He's a good man, he might have to go, uh, church. Thank you, Joe, and, uh, uh, so, so, uh, look at these things, because I want, these, these, these items need to be in the budget, because they're important, and I told you about somebody, one restaurant losing thirty thousand dollars one day, because of this citywide boil alert, because our treatment facility plant is very different than about every, every city I know about. We got a problem, and, and, and apparently you don't know what's going on, because he didn't tell you the first presentation, and I don't think he understood it the second presentation, so please to take attention to that, because it needs to be solved. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card?
The last card is Dwight Severs.
Thank you, Dwight, appreciate you. So that's last card, so I don't need to call another one, do I? There's no vote on this one, so we move on to the next one, uh, ordinance, uh, number thirty-four, twenty twenty-two. Any comments from staff on that? Council? Cards?
Stan Johnston?
This is also a no vote, by the way.
Uh, Stan Johnston, eight sixty Point Set Avenue, and as you know, I'm a former, former employee of the city of Tidesville and retired from the city of Tidesville, and I even worked under, um, uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Cook, and, uh, and I, uh, saw some of the operations, I did, I really wasn't involved that much with, involved with, with the solid waste, but I know that during, while I was there, is that we had some, some things that happened that the city of Tidesville did a fantastic job, for example, introducing the new containers and so forth, one, one of the first ones to do it, and, uh, it was a, uh, very, saving a lot of money, a lot, a lot of money, so I'm, uh, I'm, I'm very much, uh, uh, supportive of, uh, what Mr. Cook is doing, and I haven't seen him make, make errors, I think he's been doing, doing the city a good purpose, and we're lucky to have him, so thank you for, uh, so I'm not going to complain about the solid waste service charges. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card?
Last card is Tony Shifflow.
Where'd she go?
Oh, I spoke about-
Thank you. Next card. And there is no vote, council, any comment on that one? I see none, we move to one E, thirty-five, twenty twenty-two. Uh, call cards, please.
The only card is Stan Johnston.
Uh, this, uh, this particular number thirty-five indicates, uh, enterprise funds, and we have numerous enterprise funds, and I'm not sure if I'm wrong when I, when I'm talking about, uh, water and sewer, because we already had water and sewer, because that's an enterprise fund, uh, I think, I know it includes the marina, uh, and I know that, uh, uh, even drainage is enterprise fund, so I'm not sure, uh, if I'm speaking correctly when I'm talking about it, but I am concerned, I am concerned about drainage, and I've, I've noted it a number of times, for example, in this poster here, is the city of Tidesville is, uh, definitely violating laws, violating laws, and, uh, in this particular violation of laws is, is that the city of Tidesville has a stormwater master plan, and which requires us to, uh, and right now, as we're violating, and I've shown you the picture, our violation, and it's a pretty serious violation, uh, this picture, you've seen it numerous times, and it's a photo looking, uh, westerly from I ninety-five, and it shows that, is that, that the drainage system is not working, it's designed with huge, huge culvert than an I ninety-five, and this is what they need, it looks like what? But there, there's, there's at least one of them that, that's, uh, they're, they're, they're passing some water, uh, one of them's passing a good bit of water, but there's five out of six on a over two mile stretch from Fox Lake Park, no, Fox Lake Road to, uh, State Road fifty west of, uh, I ninety-five, that is, uh, supposed, that is included in our stormwater master plan, and yet, we're ignoring it, so we're violating laws in that, and, 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 and I'll just mention to you about, uh, if, uh, I'm not sure how this goes, but water and sewer is also an enterprise fund, so what this includes in enterprise funds, and I talked to you about the, the, uh, boiled water alert, and I'm concerned about the hundred and seventy-six parts per trillion that the city of Tidesville sounds like we're not going to attest for, we're not going to even consider it, even though, even though, we had National Newspaper Network, Guardian, July the sixth, reported hundred and seventy-six parts per trillion tested for PFAS in the city of Tidesville water, and you know what? It was never brought up before city council, except by me, and it's never been discussed by city council, it's never been brought up by Mr. Stauffer, even though it was brought up on national news. What planet are we on? I just wonder, I don't know, what planet are we on? We're certainly not connected to the world, so, uh, uh, I would like, uh, some, some, some people to straighten up on what's going on, because, uh, we're having some strange things happen in the city of Tidesville that nobody listens, or nobody understands, or something, I mean, I got, just, okay, thank you.
Thank you, bud. Next card, please. All right, uh-
Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Nelson, I'm in the, Mrs. here, remember Nelson? You want to make that motion?
Motion?
Yeah, we're going to have a vote on this one.
Okay.
Okay, member Stokel.
I'm sorry.
Do you want to do it, Dylan, or you want? Okay, move to adopt a tentative enterprise fund capital improvement program and related budgets of the city of Tidesville for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, and ordinance number thirty-five dash twenty twenty-two as presented.
Second.
I believe that might be member Stokel's first motion of the year.
I know, and you guys are pushing me to new limits.
So, member Stokel makes the motion, member Nelson seconds. Short, but roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes. We move to petitions and requests from the public. Anyone who wish to come up, come on up there, Mr. Nathan.
Good afternoon, Nathan Slescher in Tidesville, I just want, uh, would ask for clarification that the next meeting, the second hearing, is on the twenty-fourth. Twenty-second, woo, thank you, I had that wrong.
Good question.
Twenty-second, and, yeah, thank you, and the waste, uh, what was it, solid waste charge and rate increase was not announced, can we announce what the amount is?
Can you go ahead and do that? Or do we have that? I know I've seen it.
I know it's proposed, I just, I didn't hear a number, so that was it.
Well, could you repeat the question?
Solid waste, what was that increase?
The solid waste proposed rate increase, what was their?
Eight point two six percent.
Eight point two six, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Petitions or requests, next. Got a couple, come on up, hands up, in the front.
My name is Keith Exmeyer, and this is one of my first times speaking in front of council.
You don't, you'll be fine, no worries, thank you.
Oh, we're all family here, yes?
Here we are, go ahead.
Accountability? Contentness? Being content? As the, uh, Mr. Robinson was speaking of a fire, the smoke thereof, fire could be on one side of the planet, the smoke will affect someone else? My teeth are bad, so I don't speak very, I don't pronunciate as well as I should. A desert, disexcavated, taken to another country, that soil fertilizes tropical rainforest, producing more CO2 now. Do you care where you live? Do you care for what you speak of? Do you care? Your budget? May I ask you a question? Were all of you in office, all together, while your budget was turned upside down, and in the negative? Now it's a very aggressive recoil. Is that proper terminology? You're not on the same wavelength.
I'm not sure where you're going, so keep going, we'll get there.
Well, retroactive, uh, surcharge. So, that's your tax hike, but you'll just continue to do so. Economical logistics. You're lacking that thereof. Speak to one another, we help one another, community, everybody. Craft. I learn to teach, and I teach to learn, and all that of which I know is not so very much so, indeed.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Mr. Severs? Come on down.
Concerning the materials I handed out to you, let me just first say, the reason why I decided to review the zone budgets and the actions was because I got a thirteen point four eight percent increase in taxes, and I was well aware that you're putting money in the zone, I'd like to know what you're spending it on, and so that's why I did the research. In addition to concerns I've expressed, previously have expressed to you my concern about approval of Darkstorm, the New York, uh, AR manufacturer receiving an incentive of approximately a million dollars and you approving tax abeyance for several years. In light of the events since that occurred, and the millions of dollars they have been making off of these weapons, I really sincerely question it. Likewise, it's clear from reading the minutes that the director wants to approve as many projects as possible and not to build up a cash reserve, as reflected in the minutes. In addition, it appears as if the development or redevelopment projects are encouraged and approved even if few or no jobs are approved. Also, it appears to me that cash reimbursement or incentives are being provided even though some applicants can clearly afford to pay for the project themselves, and in one instance, they awarded a, a grand incentive for twice the amount that the person had requested. Do your existing businesses, industrial projects, are they aware that they're paying outlawed taxes, and some of that money is helping people to compete against them? I.e. restaurants, coffee shops, uh, office buildings? Whenever, whenever this was originally set up, we had visions dealing with the Tidesville Landing Project, not two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars given to Placida Golf Course for irrigation replacement. Are you really aware what tax dollars are being spent on? Are you really aware of these projects? I don't think so. And even the board members say, and I quote, "The zone board should not be positioned as helping investors make money." I'm a firm believer that people make a profit off of our help, they should repay the zone board. And I would simply like to indicate to Mr. Broome, if he wants to meet and discuss the one issue I raised, I'm available.
Thank you.
In, in addition, I wasn't aware that this project had been authorized, because publicity about the zone board and what they're doing, there really isn't any publicity, maybe you're aware of it, but, uh, when I saw that, it, there's a practical problem, Mr. Broome will probably tell you, well, you can't change anything now, because they've already started the project, but my point simply is this, what are, wouldn't we be better off that those zone dollars, the eight hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, be spent upon your existing employees adding to the employees of the city, rather than some of these projects?
All right, listen, I appreciate it, um, this is a lot to digest.
If any council member have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, petitions or requests? Didn't hear you come up.
What?
Yeah, then you were already up here for petitions.
Right, well, he was already up there, too.
No, 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 this was, he spoke on a, on a, um, agenda item-
Which one?
Just like you did, and then he came back up for petitions and requests, you already up for petitions and requests?
I don't think Stan's-
No, no, my bad, if that's not the case, I'm getting real confused here. You messed up yesterday, so.
I messed up yesterday, not today.
You messed up so much, I just got confused. My bad.
Thank you.
My bad.
Okay.
You made, you made me do it.
You did, you did.
Start over.
Okay, thank you, uh, same guy, Stan Johnston, eight sixty Point Set Avenue, and, uh, I'm not going to, I'm trying not to reiterate what I said, but, but, you know, I, I talked about this boiled water alert, citywide boil alert, and, and nobody's responding on that, and I think somebody needs to respond sometime, because this is a serious thing, millions of dollars, and we're talking about, nobody has the assurance that, that you're going to have, uh, in other words, the water you drink is, is going to be right, because you get the boiled water alert late, or you don't get the boiled water alert, uh, at all, so, uh, that, that's, but, but let me go to something else, and that is that, uh, uh, the city of Tidesville, I don't, there's no way you can buy common sense, common sense, and the thing is, is that, uh, I don't know what to do, I really don't know what, I, I, I talk to people and they say, oh, forget it, you know, and I'm talking about, for example, the, uh, spraying, spraying of people with, with the, raw sewage in, in the, and not turning the fountains off, common sense and so forth like that, I mean, uh, city manager, he, he comes up with this, this idea or something like that, he tells people that FDEP says it's okay to do it, well, we don't know anybody in FDEP that, that said it's okay to do it, but, but, uh, uh, it's, it's expensive, and we're talking about something very expensive, when we're talking about the health of people, and you can kill them, you can kill them with this, uh, with this sewage, spraying sewage, and we're talking about Legionnaires' disease, it killed lots of people, and you couldn't, you can, you can have Legionnaires' disease, it's, it's, comes from, from sewage and so forth like that, aerosol spray, and, uh, it kills them. it's comes from sewage and so forth like that aerosol spray, and it kills them. So this can be something that you aren't in your budget, is that whether it's communication with through city manager, whether it was Sean Stauffer or something like that, but you got to stop this foolishness, foolishness. And I'm talking about foolishness is spraying is don't turn it, not turning off the fountains. It should be somewhere in the budget, that you're not going to have them with this foolishness. So I'm asking you to consider that in your in your budgeting and everything you do, is that spraying people is just something that's nasty. And in my profession, it says, don't do it. I'm a civil engineer, registered professional engineer. And it's surprising to me is that I come here, and that's my profession, and I say, don't do it, and you do it anyways. That's what I'm licensed to do. And yet, you're not listening. So thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Petitions or requests? I see no more. Good, good. Not many here.
I'd like staff to publicly announce when the next budget hearing is for adoption of final budget.
September twenty second at five thirty PM, located here in the council chambers, second and final public hearing.
All right. With that, meeting adjourned.